Good evening. It is now 5:00 PM, Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. And I call to order the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox. Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Councilmember Jones. Mayor Protem Ramirez. Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jones and Mayor Protem Ramirez are absent.
I'd like to make a formal request. Oh, maybe that's on the regular agenda, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't see anyone that needs to address the council at this time. Therefore, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have one item this evening. It is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 subsection D2. The facts and circumstances related to the anticipated litigation are set forth on the agenda in accordance with Government Code Section 54956.9 E2. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session, and we will resume our regular session Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM, Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. And I call to order the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Accessor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez. Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez absent.
Thank you. At this time, may we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We only had one item this evening. It was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 D2 and pursuant to Government Code 54956.9 E2. The facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So now we move on to invocation by Pastor Des. I can't pronounce his last name, but Victorville First Church of the Nesterin and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you. Thank you for the privilege and opportunity to live in this community. This evening, I ask for your wisdom that it would be imparted and shadow each member of Victorville's City Council. Prosper each decision of this meeting, and may they be righteous in your eyes. I ask for this in the name of Jesus Christ, our risen Savior. Amen.
I guess I'll come down and start with Certificate of Recognition for Civil Rights Essay Contest winner Ivan Young and Brown's plaque sponsor, Thomas O'Connell, Best Best and Krieger Attorney at Law. What an honor it is for me to do this this evening. I'd like to invite Ivan Young and Jen Gonzalez from the Victor Elementary School District, along with Tom O'Connell from Best Best and Krieger, to please come forward and join Each year, the city of Victorville teams with the Victor Elementary School District to host our Civil Rights Essay Contest. I am pleased to announce that this year's winner is Evan Young, a sixth grader at Galileo School of Gifted and Talented Education. Evan, I'm having a problem with his name today. Evan wrote this winning essay about women's rights, advocate Lucy Burns, who advocated for the 19th Amendment that gave American women the right to vote. Evan, it's my honor to present this certificate of recognition to you. Congratulations, and continue writing, and you did a terrific job, and we appreciate everything that you wrote and everything that you represent. Okay? Thank you so much. And I also like to present to you a replica of the plaque that is, that we actually unveiled yesterday, so everyone can see it. Oh, that's right, he already received his. He already. And I also have this certificate of recognition for Best Best and Krieger Attorney at Law. Thank you so very much. Job well done. I should have rehearsed this before. So bear with me. Now, I'm pleased to invite Julie Bonilla with the Magic Yarn Project to come forward Each year, roughly 83,000 young girls between the ages of two and 10 are diagnosed with cancer. Hemotherapy treatments often leave young scalps too sensitive for traditional wigs. The Magic Yarn Project, a nonprofit organization, is devoted to bringing magic back into the lives of these young patients. By creating wigs inspired by beloved Disney characters, Magic Yarn helps these children laugh and play during scary times. Julie, I'm proud to present you with this certificate recognizing the Magic Yarn Project for its efforts to brighten the lives of children battling cancer. We appreciate everything that you do in appreciation of your volunteerism and donation of your time and talents to the admirable cause of bringing comfort and magic into the lives of children battling cancer. I present this certificate to you. And now I'd like to invite Brenda Sutherland from Casa of San Bernardino. Come forward and join me, please. Brenda, I'm proud to join the Victorville City Council in proclaiming January as National Mentoring Month in the city of Victorville. Quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships, communication, and positive self-esteem and growth in our children. Youth who meet regularly with mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. We encourage members of our community to participate and support mentoring programs to help us build a strong Victorville. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. And I won't read it, but nevertheless, I'll read the last sentence here. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Gloria Garcia, Mayor of the city of Victorville, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as National Mentoring Month and encourage our community to engage in activities and partnerships that support mentoring with programs that promote positive outcomes such as improved self-esteem, social skills, and knowledge of career opportunities. Congratulations, and thank you for everything that you do. And God bless you. And now we have a presentation by our city manager to the city council and its 2019 accomplishments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Before you, and to benefit the audience behind you, we have a PowerPoint presentation that will loop while I'm sharing with you my perspectives on 2019, and what you'll see is a lot, is a sample of what we're proud of in terms of what we collectively, council, executive team, leadership team, and staff have accomplished. And so with that, you may recall this time last year, doing a similar presentation, first saying Happy New Year to you all and to the audience. And one of the greatest messages that I shared with you last year was that 2018 was the best year the city had had in 10 years. There hadn't been a year better, and there was a lot of reasons why 2018 was so good, in large part because we settled a lot of issues of the past. We started to see a fiscal environment for the city to where fiscally things had improved. We were actually supplementing our general fund reserve, something that we hadn't traditionally seen over the previous 10 years. So actually, after having given that presentation, I thought, good gosh, 2019, it's going to be hard to do better than 2018. And I do tell you, from my perspective and from that of the executive and leadership team, 2019 was improved over 2018 for a lot of different reasons. And a lot of those different reasons, I think, have to do first with some of the more notorious projects that we accomplished in 2019. First, we started our own city fire department. And after having been directed back in January of 2018, we finally rolled out a transition on March 30 of 2019, a brand-new fire department, fully staffed, starting with, obviously, the command staff led by Chief Benson, all the way through the ranks, including captain and engineer and firefighter paramedics. All stations are operating. We've been fortunate to realize, after having done that, the transition first went smoother than expected. We were planning for the worst, and it actually went very, very smooth with very few hiccups on that transition day. But since that time, we've been focused largely on enhancing the service, and I can tell you, and referring back to some of the activity reports that we've shared with you over the past months, we believe certainly we've improved our service. We're actually responding to calls really that only the firefighter paramedic team needs to respond to, or call volume accordingly has reduced. And that's largely because we're taking advantage of the technology that was, that had been available, but we're now using it, which is the Confire Dispatching Emergency Management Dispatch System. It allows us to more effectively respond to just those calls that we need to respond to, which actually then allows the fire apparatus to be in the fire station more responsive to actual fires when those types of emergency calls come out. So that's certainly one of the more notorious projects that we completed last year. Riverwalk, as you know, and there was a video that our Public Information Office put together, really highlighting the 3.9 mile segment that we just did the grand opening on. It's really a community enhancement, certainly for Victorville, but as we're realizing now, the use is, we couldn't have imagined the type of use that we're getting. There's routinely a lot of cars parked at that parking lot facility that we constructed, and the facility is getting used not just by bicyclists, but rollerbladers. We've got a lot of walkers walking their dog, pushing strollers. It's just, I think this, I think what we're seeing certainly in terms of its use is far greater than what we ever imagined. So we're certainly seeing that as one of the more notorious projects being built. And we're nearing the completion of having a fully functioning bike system as we're moving forward, and we made a lot of progress over 2019, actually acquiring right-of-way for the Green Tree Extension into Yucca Loma. We should be certifying the right-of-way here fairly soon. But once that connection is made, we'll actually have a fully connected bike path system, starting at Fish Hatchery Road and Bear Valley Road, and if, meandering through the entire city and eventually reaching out to the terminus of the Mojave Riverwalk, which is in Old Town, but some of that system extends as far as the Southern California Logistics Airport. So once, and hopefully we can report this time next year, that we're prepared to start construction on that Green Tree Extension. I think certainly also getting a lot of attention has been the efforts you as city council have taken to prioritize addressing the homelessness solutions that are needed for this community and for the valley. This council-directed staff and staff followed through in actually forming a task force, which is very active. It's up and running, and it's been successful enough to where it's brought back a strategic plan for this council, which we're now acting upon and should allow us in future years to be much more competitive in actually pursuing and obtaining funding to put some real homelessness solutions in place. Related to that, certainly being much more on the forefront in trying to address the issue, I think it made it easier for us to respond this, start of this last winter in using one of our underutilized public facilities for a warming shelter at the Victor Transit But I think the rest of our success largely has been attributed to the vision that we set out this time last year, reaffirmed by the council when we did our budget. And some of the goals and visions that we had as we adopted the last budget was first to reconnect with our customers and residents. And we've done that through a number of different means. Certainly, we have increased our social media presence. We're very active, we're very engaged, and actually responsive now. It's not something that we had always done, but we're actually engaging with the public on social media so that whether it's positive or negative, we're actually getting the right message out there, the accurate message, and trying to make sure that the facts are what the public and the community has with respect to things that are going on in our community. We started out as a pilot, and we've decided as the leadership team and the executive management team to continue recommending as a part of our budgets going forward, the community pop-ups. This last year, as a part of our effort also to reconnect, we did some what we call community pop-ups, where we, on very short notice, sent out notices to a particular neighborhood, inviting them to their park, where we as a city showed up, opened the park up, and did everything from having doggy fashion shows to movies in the park, to actually bringing live bands out, to actually touching apparatus. We actually brought all of the heavy city equipment. And in part of that was not only to have the community out and seeing what we use to keep the city safe and clean, we actually used it as an opportunity to educate the public about where their money goes. In fact, we had a number of signs developed specifically for the particular apparatus so people knew exactly what it costs to buy a sweeper, or buy a fire engine, or whatever other type of equipment we had. And it's kind of eye-opening when you can actually directly relate and touch, you know, the equipment that we're buying and relate it to the money being spent. It's very often that we get criticized for having to raise rates, or we charge too much for services when people don't know exactly what it takes to provide those services. So it was also an educational opportunity to better connect the public with what we have to, how we have to manage our resources. We did also identify as one of our goals and visions to improve our customer service by increasing efficiency and effectiveness. One of the things that, and it was certainly illustrated when we did the pop-up events in the two parks this last summer, is we had every single department in the city represented. Now, we have a little over 400 employees total that work with us, and not always is it easy to get everybody to work with each other, get to know each other, share with each other. And certainly, these pop-up events has actually allowed us internally to create an environment where there's increased collaboration amongst all the departments, reducing the silo effect that we had once had many, many years ago, and just really kind of encouraging a more collaborative work culture. So that's something that I'm proud to share with you that I believe we're achieving a different culture, which is a much more collaborative culture. But we've also improved our customer service. We've realigned some of the counters, permitting, for example. We've set it up now using technology and realigning and reconfiguring some workspace to try to reduce some of those customer complaints, which when it comes to city hall, some of those customer complaints that we learned about were the public just not knowing where to go, or feeling bounced around from department to department to get one particular project through. We have reconfigured the development side so that when it comes to planned submittals or even getting permits for simple things like encroachment permits, we've actually centralized that now all on one counter so that the public has one place to go, whether it's planned submittal, construction permits, building permits, encroachment permits, that's all being done in one location now to make it easier for the public to get their service. So those are some enhancements that we've made internal to the city. We've also, to reduce the negative public perception, we've changed our workdays and our work hours. City Hall's now open every Friday. We had previously been closed every Friday, and we actually were able to accomplish that by eliminating the furloughs and going to a staggered shift to where effectively every employee now has a 980 schedule. We have an A and a B shift, but one of the complaints that we were running into before we had the furlough was the public didn't know exactly which Friday we were open and closed. And then, of course, when we had the furlough, we had to close every Friday, which made us less accessible to the public. So this last year, we actually implemented a new work schedule to where we're available now to the public five days a week. It does reduce staff on the Fridays, but what we're also finding is that those Fridays that we do work, it's amazingly quiet, so we're actually believing that the employees are able to accomplish even much more in terms of their workload. So with that, the other goal and vision that we had was improving our general fund reserve. And one of the things that I wanted to share with you, and I'm going to interrupt this presentation and just jump to a couple of slides that I wanted to give particular attention to. Last year, we reported that we were making progress in achieving our adopted, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to touch that, am I, Tony?
You are.
Yes. So in June, here we go. In June, when we presented the budget to you, this is, this should be a familiar slide. At least the four blue bars should be generally familiar with what we shared with you as a council when we were preparing our budget. And one of the things that we shared with you was that we were making very meaningful progress in achieving our general fund reserve target. Now, several years ago, the city council, I believe it was 2012-ish, the city council adopted a general reserve target of 15%, meaning that you wanted to have available 15% cash unrestricted over your forthcoming operating expense year. And we had never achieved that before, though the policy is new. We've been working through it, and what you can see in the blue bars, and what I shared with you at the budget was that since 2016, we'd been increasing our general fund reserve, achieving 59% of that 15% reserve target, all the way up to about 75%. We were, we actually shared with you that we believed we would actually achieve that reserve target by the end of this fiscal year. What this graph shows you is now that we've closed out our books for fiscal year 2019, the yellow bar is showing that of the general fund reserve cash that we have available, we're now at 18% of our operating expenses. So what that's telling you is we are now exceeding our general fund reserve target, which is a good thing. And certainly, the green bar is showing the new projection of where we envision ending our fiscal year that we're currently in. A large part of that spike in the closeout of the 2018 fiscal year were one-time revenues, Mr. Harris could elaborate in greater detail as to what I would consider a one-time pop. And a large part of it has to do with the state having withheld more than they should have over previous years. But it was a great surprise for us to where we've actually been able But it was a great surprise for us to where we've actually been able to keep that money free and be able to show you tonight that we have, as a city, through June 30, 2019, achieved our general fund reserve target for the first time. Now, while that's exciting news, I'll take you to the next slide.
Before you move forth, I have a question in terms of your 18% over budget, which is seemingly good news. Is that actual to actual, or did we have a specific revenue coming in that projected it that way? Because I know if we're doing approximation based to actual and we have a very large revenue source coming in for that year, it would bump us up for 18%. So what is, if you understand my question?
You know what, George is volunteering.
So what really happened last year, one, it's a combination of revenues exceeding our expectations overall by about a percentage and a half. But more importantly, State of California in 2018 changed the organization at the state. They changed from the Board of Equalization to this new organization that allocates out sales tax. And so at the end of 2018, they actually shorted us some money that, just as a result of them taking a while to get organized, they shorted us some money past our recognition period for that year. And so, expected surpluses that we should have gotten in 18, we actually received in 19. And so, that's why Keith, the city manager, acknowledged that it was, it's one-time revenues because it's a catch-up payment that we received in 2019.
Thank you for that clarification.
In addition to that, we did have and experience some salary savings when compared to what we budgeted for the launch of the fire department. We were able to actually recognize some lower cost than was what was originally projected when we wrote the budget, when we implemented the new fire department.
So with that, and similar to the message that I shared with you when we adopted the budget, this chart also is similar. And in the next one, I'll show you the update, including the updated actuals. But this chart actually shared with you that while we were, at the time, making meaningful progress towards achieving our reserve target, the message then was, as we achieve the target, this is not necessarily being shared with you as an invitation to spend. The reserve policy largely was put in place for fiscal prudence. But at the same time, I also shared the forward outlook, which is the enjoyment we have in achieving the target today, it's very likely that can be short-lived. And especially since we're all familiar recently, and it was very well-deserved in that, for example, on the public safety side, the sheriff's department did reach agreement with the labor union that represents their employees. There is a new MOU in place that certainly increases the cost of public safety service now known to us over the next five years. And roughly, that's going to be about a 25% increase in the cost of service, not changing the level of service, and that's important to know. And with that, one of the things that we compared that to is the revenues relied upon to pay for public safety is general fund, I'm sorry, is sales tax and property tax. Those are the largest components of your general fund. And right now, those revenues, we can only predict increasing at a pace of just over 1%. So 1% annually compared to 25% over five years, that's effectively what you're seeing illustrated here in this chart, where the blue line is revenues and the orange line is expenses. And there's a point in time where, right now, we're in the 1920 fiscal year and we're pretty close to balance. But you certainly see next year, without any changes in service, the two lines diverging, meaning that your expenditures are going to outpace revenues and you're going to have to find cash somewhere to make up that budget and balance. That cash somewhere is going to be the general fund reserve that we're actually highlighting to you as reaching its target. So then, the next slide attempts to summarize for you the outlook of that general fund reserve. So while we're achieving it now, this chart is showing you that in the 20, right after the 2020, 21 fiscal year, you're going to start seeing expenses outpace revenues, which is going to create a dependency on the cash available. So the top chart is showing revenues and expenses. The bottom lines, the yellow and the gray, that's actually showing your general fund balance. And where you see the gray line intersecting and dipping downward, that's effectively where you're going to, you're having to draw on general fund reserve to make up the difference between the blue and the orange line. Maybe somewhat confusing, but the point is unless there are additional forms of revenue identified or unless services are reduced, you have a real issue to address in the 21, 22 fiscal year through 22, I'm sorry, through 24, 25. You're effectively going to be relying on that general fund reserve. And what this is actually showing is that somewhere in the middle of the 24, 25 fiscal year, you'll actually run out of general fund revenue, general fund reserve revenue, unless there's something done in terms of either the changing of the level of service or increasing the revenues going forward. So while we're excited about the fact that we have achieved our target, this still continues to illustrate something that we need to take very seriously going forward is how do we plan to fund the essential services that our residents are demanding. I am pleased to share with you that I, along with the rest of the leadership team, along with Police Chief, Police Chief and I have been spending a lot of time together working on what you've asked us to do, which is to develop a public safety plan. But with that public safety plan, we're also working on recommendations as to ways that we can actually sustain that public safety plan, not just in the short term, but we actually have an outlook, a financial plan that tries to look forward as far as 2035. So with that, we as staff are thankful for your leadership and support. Without it, I don't think we'd be here, able to share this information with you. Certainly, the highlight of the projects that we all worked on together, the success we've had in getting us to this point as being in a good fiscal position today. We're excited where we're at today. We're cautiously optimistic about the future. And that's one thing that we want you to be aware of going forward is we've got to start thinking about, now that we've achieved this fiscal sustainability goal, we need to also start thinking about how we're going to address the needs of the future. So with that, thank you again, Happy New Year, and that's all I have to share unless there's any questions.
Going back to the general fund reserves, the council has an established policy in terms of what those monies are intended for. And it's not, as I understand it, it's not meant to cover day-to-day operations and ordinary types of expenses. It's meant to really anticipate crises and the things that come from recessionary cycles. Am I correct on that?
That's absolutely correct. It was really intended to serve as your rainy day fund. When we went through the recession of the past, we saw, for example, in property taxes alone, we saw property taxes drop as much as 45% year over year, which is just a hard, hard decrease in revenue to absorb. And it's certainly even harder to adjust to, especially when you have staffed up to a certain service level. So that's exactly what that 15% target is for. One of the things that we're going to be evaluating as a part of the public safety plan and the fiscal plan that goes along with it, is whether or not 15% is the right number. We're going to, we're doing some modeling right now to decide, should it be greater, should it be lower? But we want to make sure we have some good, solid facts that support why it needs to be that number. But it is your rainy day fund.
And then to follow up on that, if we were to use general fund reserves for public safety expenses as an example, and we were to find ourselves in a recession, we would experience the hit of that probably much quicker than normal. Would that be a fair statement? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I also have a couple of questions, so I'll anticipate. I know the recession of 2008 hit everybody a lot within terms of teachers and job. There was no job creations and it was a diminishment. And that led us to our furlough days, which now we're no longer with furlough days. But to hear that taxes fell up to 45% is an egregious statement to make. And it's shocking to me to hear that. And I want to understand if we know that 45% and our reserves are only 15% based on policy, which wouldn't take us for anything outside of the norm that would happen outside of general maintenance and operation. Why are we not increasing not only our general fund reserves, but why are we still subsidizing a private mall for the next 26 years? I mean, now we're having to look at our general fund reserve analysis, which is 42% of our general fund is taken up by police and fire alone. That's almost 50% of our general budget, and our general budget is $216 million. You're telling us that we're exceeding by 2025. There's going to be a cause of running out, so we need to look how we're going to supplement. But you also gave me new information of 25% for our police force. In two months, we're paying our police force $4.6 million. I think we need a workshop on how to really address the issue of these are real numbers that I'm hearing today, because this is nothing to lightly just brush over. These are, I just don't even have words for what I've heard today in my general understanding of what really is taking place. I've heard this before, but now I have a new knowledge. So my questions are based on that. I mean, have you anticipated a proposed workshop for the council to even consider within his budgetary discretionary force to see what we are going to do? I'm not asking of a proposition of a new tax, but I would like to see different options. Have you, as a city manager, thought about bringing that to us?
In fact, I have, and that's something that we're actively working on. And that's actually what I just shared with you, that is a part of this public safety plan that you've directed staff to proceed with. A part of it, and this public safety plan doesn't work without a financial plan. So what you're asking for will actually be a part of that presentation and deliberation with this council is the financial element as well.
Are we discussing that on February 25th with the consultants for mission, vision, and goal statements with the citywide strategic planning, or is that something separate?
Something separate.
And this is our answer? We don't have an answer. I feel.
I just did.
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, what are we doing? February 25th is for something different. What is that strategic plan that you anticipate for public? I mean, 25%, come on, nobody could do anything about that? 25% for the next five years? We don't even give that increase to our employees at the lowest echelons. I mean, how do you do that?
So there's a couple of conversations. I think there's a couple of subjects that you're kind of interweaving. So February 25th, I suspect, is one of the meetings set up more directly related to the strategic planning. This council, several months ago, directed staff to pursue retaining a professional consultant to, among other things, develop a strategic plan so that there's a sense of planning about what we, as a city, want to look like going forward. From that process, I think we're expecting to get some results to where we can then start adding to the fiscal plan that we're working on. So if there's other special needs, whether it's beyond public safety, it's maybe library-related or parks-related or some other kind of program, you know, we can start getting that agreed upon collectively by this council. So effectively, the February 25th that you're talking about is a totally separate conversation, more focused on you as the council, what do you want the city to look like? What is your vision so that we, as staff, then can start working towards that?
And you said something about working with public safety?
Well, the public safety plan, again, is an independent conversation. The 25% that you're speaking to is more directly related to the illustration we shared, summarizing the fiscal impact that we now know are going to go forward in future years with our sheriff's contract. And what that means in terms of the actual costs that we're going to bear over the next five years, basically trying to illustrate that the expenses are outpacing current revenues.
Right. So all I'm asking is, where is council on this? I mean, you have the stronghold, but where is council in the participation?
Council has directed us to prepare that, prepare that public safety plan. That's something that we will bring back when the safety plan is complete. It's not complete right now. All of staff or leadership executives are currently working on it. Once it is complete, we'll bring it back to this council for deliberation.
You're bringing on several options, even the ones that are non-viable. And it's going to be within 60 to 90 days, any timeframes?
My plan was to bring back the most viable options. If you'd like us to include the non-viable options, I guess we can consider including that in the plan.
Well, the council already made a direction, but I'm asking as a council member to voice on the record, which obviously is not going to come to fruition. But for the sense of being a voice, I mean, whatever is viable to the city, perhaps in my eyes, is unviable. And when the council comes in and we see the unviable, we can all talk about it. But again, that's because I need to play stuff on the record to show that I'm at least concerned for all options of what I would perceive to be, whatever the council should say or cannot say, either the good or the bad in balancing. But thank you, I appreciate. No further questions.
Madam, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you have?
I have a couple of, my on here, my voice does not carry, so. Would you please explain, Keith? We know that the sheriff's contract, signed a contract with the employees after we adopted our budget last year. And that is a five-year contract, I believe. And it provides for a built-in cost of living annually for a five-year period. Would you please explain what that amount is? Because I think that's getting confused with other costs. How much is it per year cumulative? What does it mean in five years?
My recollection is that the current contract amount with the county sheriff is in the order of, don't quote me, about $27 million. And so, 25% of that, I don't have my calculator handy, but let's call that $6 million over the next five years. That $27 million contract, as we currently realize it today, will increase by that 25% and be realized in five years.
But not per year?
No, not 25% per year.
Yeah, it's a five-year contract, there's so much per year. It'll be about the same, except it's cumulative. But on the other hand, in a five-year period, it'll be about 25% more. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the reason why we're trying to illustrate that is those costs now are known to us. We have the joy of knowing what that cost is going to be. I can tell you right now that that is a hard cost to swallow when your general fund revenues are not increasing by the same pace. That's why we have the caution going forward, and that's why we're developing the public safety plan that'll have a fiscal component to it.
Also, if I may, Madam Mayor, the sheriff's department works very hard to get grants from other agencies and to work in cooperation. So there will be some substantial savings. There have been almost every year, some grants and some cooperative moves that help pay for police services for the community. But my other comment that I wanted to make is while we have established a reserve and we funded the reserve, and we may dip into that reserve this coming year, you should only do it one time. I mean, because otherwise, that reserve is, the very purpose of the reserve is for items you didn't budget that are emergency unannounced or things that you have to take care of. It's not there to use as a funding method. And so, once you dip in and use the reserve, then you have to replace it. So I don't want people to believe that, oh, we have a good reserve so we don't have to find any other source of revenue because we can use the reserves. We cannot. We can do it one time. At the outset, under extraordinary circumstances, maybe twice, but never more than that. Because now, you're entering a situation where your third-year budget will be a deficit budget. We can't afford to do that. So we do have to find, we have to find either grants, we have to find other financing someplace somehow, or change the contract. I don't know of anyone who wants to reduce public services. So this will be some really interesting meetings. I hope the public will participate. And I hope we do have some study sessions, not only for the budget, but for these items exactly that we're discussing now so that we can have greater input from the public and more input from the city council. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I have time left, I just wanted to add something.
Madam Mayor, if I have time left, I just wanted to add something for clarification. Do you have time left? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, may I?
Thank you. All right, so I just want to make sure that we're very clear. So there were two specific items that the council brought forward and gave direction on. The first one was to create a vision, mission, and goals. That's coming up on February twenty-fifth. So that's that one that the council gave direction on. The second one is with regard to a motion that I brought to the council and thankfully the council approved. And the city manager was given four months, I believe it was, to bring it forward. And I'll just go ahead and read the motion again so that it renews our thinking on this. And it was, "For the purpose of enriching the quality of life for Victorville residents, we directed the city manager to bring back for review and possible action one, a comprehensive plan for improving public safety with a particular focus on community policing, community police relations, code enforcement, fire, and animal care and control. And number two, viable option or options for generating revenue toward that end, and that in the interim, the council would be able to continue its dialogue on the issue should it be deemed necessary." I thought that might help. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I have one last comment, if I may. So, you know, I like to place this on the record.
Have time left? She does? Okay.
So this council has a tendency of changing a lot in terms of when it comes to election after election. And I was, as I was telling some of the audience, younger crowd in the audience members, we come up here and when we have these things that we look at, we are not the experts in the police force and transportation or infrastructure. So when I make my comments, it's not implicit that I understand necessarily how the police force is producing its resourcing as public service. But in a very brief conversation with Devoe Nowitzki, he let me know basically that the contract is between the county and the union, and the city just has to come up with a way of paying unless the city thinks that it has within its manageable budget, bringing its own police force. And I did not have that knowledge, obviously. So I would like, for consideration of executive administration, to always consider when you have council members that are coming in, they're probably not politically inclined into the logistics of politicking with these types of things. And it would be a good workshop or one-on-one to help the member understand in order to make viable decisions and not just push for something that perhaps is not as viable as possible. So I just like to say that, thanks.
I think now I will have our city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The city council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item is requested to complete a speaker card and hand it to any sheriff's deputy prior to the public comment or before an agenda item is discussed. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not to the members of the audience. Individuals should not approach the dais unless authorized to do so by the presiding officer. In accordance with state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. We have no revisions to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, at this time, if there is an item on this agenda that might be a conflict of interest to any council member or board member, it should be identified at this time. Are any of these agenda items a conflict of interest of any council member? Okay, then we will move on to our public hearings.
Madam Mayor, I was going to make a request to change the order of this, but I'm not going to do that anymore. It is fine how it is. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
So this time, we will have public hearings, and I will start with item number one, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption and award of construction contract to CS Legacy Construction, Inc., for the skate park at Doris Davis Park. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approved the notice of exemption for the skate park at Doris Davis Park and award of construction contract to CS Legacy Construction for the skate park at Doris Davis Park, number BM nineteen dash zero eight seven, in the amount of one million one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask our council members, see if they have any questions of staff. Three-minute time limit. Any council member that has any questions at this time?
All right, I'll turn my microphone off. I was wondering why, I understand the DIF fees for Wreckin' Park and the expenditures on a Wreckin' Park activity such as a skate park. I didn't follow using transportation funds for the skate park.
Yeah, the, you know, Brian, might be better to correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a component of the project, I believe it's the sidewalk-related improvements, the flatwork-related improvements that are LTF-eligible. So to the extent we're able to utilize other funds, in this particular recommendation, they chose to use LTF. I think the question maybe has to deal with whether or not, if we didn't want to use LTF, would they instead be DIF-eligible? And that's a question I would probably ask Brian to address.
There's a small amount of the local transportation fund on this project, and it's actually for work in the right-of-way to reconstruct an existing driveway approach. So it wasn't really eligible for the park development impact fee, and that's why we use that fund source.
On Hughes Road?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes. So this item, I would like for the council to consider it for continuance after public speaking and giving their comment. I'd like to see a full board, and we're missing one of our council members, and I think she's very strongly opinionated, and this item is something that she should be available for. So that's my motion to continue it. So we have our missing council member available as well, so we have a full council.
You could either consider that motion at this point, but either way, you should open the public hearing. I think the motion would be for continuance. Have the, any comments tonight, and then decide whether or not you would like to consider continuing the item or if you want to act on it this evening.
Okay, we don't have any other questions of staff at this time? Do we have any questions of staff?
I do, actually. I just need to know, is there a time element involved here? I know that we've got bids. How long are those bids good for?
That's exactly the question that we're scrambling around because typically, the bid prices are only good for so long. So that would likely be the caution of staff is, to continue this, we'd have to be mindful of how long we can actually continue it before the actual prices in the bid going bad. And I don't know, with us scrambling up here, maybe Brian again, or even Stefan, do you have any sense of how long these prices hold? Forty-five to sixty days, I'm sorry, is the answer I just got.
How long was that?
Forty-five to sixty days. So these bid prices likely could not be honored if we delayed beyond that timeframe.
Yeah, and I understand that because materials and everything just keep changing. Yeah, okay. Are there any other questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, I have comments, but not questions, so I'll wait.
A public hearing at this time, then.
And then there's a pending motion. I don't know if that's taken before public or after.
At this time, I opened the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, so I closed the public.
I wouldn't close it right now. I would now consider the motion to see if you want to continue it or not. Otherwise, we'd have to renotice the item.
Okay. At this time...
So there's a motion now to continue.
We need to make a motion whether we continue this item?
Correct.
And until when?
Do you have a date that you'd like to recommend?
Well, let's go ahead. Staff said it has between forty-five and sixty, so the elongated period would be sixty days. I mean...
It would be sixty days from the date that the bids were submitted, would it not, Keith, I believe? So, and I don't know what that date is, so perhaps just maybe continuance for thirty days would be a recommendation, and then you could continue again if you have that time, I don't know.
That's viable.
Is that a modification to your motion? A motion to continue for, I guess it would be the second meeting in February?
Just for your information, it was this last, November twenty-first is when we actually got the bid prices back. So we're cutting it tight, I think, is what staff is suggesting to me.
I do think that this council can override the circumstances that we do on all occasions when someone finds it that it's important for the council to do so. So despite the fact that I try to accommodate thirty days and staff seems to be kind of pushing towards it, you know, it's always a discretion to this council, as long as we get three votes to do that. And so I don't understand why thirty days happens to be such a bad deal when we went from first not approving the skate park to coming now and considering we're missing one of our council members, who strongly feels that she should be a part of this, and now we have more pushback. I appreciate what you're letting us know, but as a council member, if I were absent, I would like my colleague to fight for something that I'm really strongly about, despite whatever my staff feels.
May I, Madam Mayor? I, my understanding is that the bids are good for a period of time, not because we designate it, but we can't hold the contract available after a certain period of time. So we can continue it, but we may automatically nullify it. We can't, we nullify the contract if we go beyond a certain time. That's been my understanding. So while we can continue it, we may not be able to keep the contract. And assume for a moment that all the councils in agreement to move ahead, then you have to rebid it if you go over a period of time. Is that true or not? I need to know that.
That is staff's understanding as well.
Okay, so I think what we're trying to figure out, what is the maximum time that we could continue? I would like to see that council member here also, and I have no idea when the council member will be available. And I don't know that two weeks or a month is sufficient, and I don't know, I think it's good we're having the discussion. I'd like to see the council member here. But on the other hand, if we don't know and we continue it and lose the bids, we're costing...well, it's worth a discussion from the council. I think we need to discuss this. The motion to continue it, I don't know that we have a certain date yet. I'll second that motion once we get a date. But I want the date to hold tight to protect the bids we have, just in case we move ahead.
Well, we should have an answer, whether she will be available to be a part of it.
Well, we have no one here speaking, so we could continue it till the next council meeting and be safe, and then we may continue it again if we need to.
I would assume, Sophie, would the next council meeting get us within the still-current bid dates? Do we know, we don't know?
We are at sixty days from when the bids were received.
So are we already at that? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
We're at the limit. What we can do as staff, if the council chooses to continue the item, is go back to the vendors and request, ask them if they will hold their prices for thirty days or whatever number of days the council wishes. That's what we can do because we can't dictate whether or not they'll hold those prices, but we can ask them.
So are we at the end of the term?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
So we don't have any days left?
We don't. Unfortunately, because of the holidays, it took a lot of, it took a lot of the days that were available for meetings.
Well, then if the motion is in second and we don't have a full vote, I mean, it doesn't matter, right? So if we have to see what's going to happen, and I'm advocating for one person to be here, it just shows the audience that we're just not willing to be team players and we're just going to butt each other. And eventually, nothing's going to happen. We're still going to lose. So, I mean, next meeting, Mr. Cox said, we have a two-to-two vote. It could go anyway. So, I mean, if you play it right, you make yourself look good in front of this audience. It's not difficult.
Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you. So I don't even consider the things that were just suggested. It just doesn't even enter into my mind. But I do think it's, for me, it's always preferable to have a full council to do any of the business that comes before us. There are some that are absolute standouts, like issues related to policy, like our governance handbook, our general policies, issues of our own personnel. Those are fundamental. And then the other standout, of course, would be if something is near and dear to a particular council member's heart that would want to weigh in on the subject. But for me, what I have to consider now, if we are already at that sixty-day mark, we know that now if we go back to them, there's no guarantee that we'll hold the bid, and then we're, and then we're at the process of starting it all over again. My concern with that is because this is the second time already that we've gone through the bid process, and I wonder whether we risk our reputation and whether anyone would want to do business with us if we were to enter yet again into another bid process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Gomez and seconded by Councilmember Cox to continue.
To a date? To the next meeting?
Yeah, two weeks was the next council. Does that create a problem, staff?
Possible that it does. You know, really, we have to, what you're advising that we do, if we continue it here tonight, we would have to go back to the bidders and ask if they're willing to hold their prices beyond the sixty days. And that's really a discretionary matter they have, not us.
Okay. If I might, I don't know which council members would like to see us proceed and which one do not. But we have to make some assumptions, but we have to have an open discussion. If we proceed with this, if we continue this for the next meeting, staff immediately gets on the phone, the bidders say that we hold it up, then we'll have this on the agenda two weeks from now. Is that two weeks from now? Approximately two weeks from now. If those individuals say no, we're not going to, staff has to come back and ask the mayor to call a special meeting so that we deal with this issue, then at that point, I'm willing to do that.
So, Madam Mayor, if I could, I have a question then? Because I want to make sure that I understand. So in the interest of being fair to the whole of the council and a council member that's very interested in this particular subject, if we hold it for two, if we continue it for two weeks, we get from CS Legacy Construction that they're not willing to hold the bid for that two-week period. I'm not sure what good a special meeting would do, except to say we've lost our bid and we have to start the process anew?
What happens, and if the staff comes back and says they're willing to hold it, we have an opportunity to get a little five council here. If they're not willing to hold it, we have to come back, and this council then is forced to vote up or down in regard to moving ahead or not with awarding the contract.
But would we be beyond, okay? Is today the drop-dead date on the sixty days?
Today is exactly sixty days from the day that we received the bid. But let me first verify. Give me a moment. I want to make sure that we're providing the accurate information as to what the requirement is. To the option that was presented by Deputy City Manager Smith, to where we make a call to them and see if they'll hold their bid considering the circumstances, is always an option that we have if the council's direction is to at least give us the two weeks, if you want to just defer it for the two weeks. That is not an uncommon request to ask them to hold their bids, considering the circumstance that we had a missing council member. We, well, yeah, we would have to ask all of them to make sure that if one of them did, chose not to hold their bid, that their new bid, if they were going to revise it, is then weighed against the revised bids of the other two. And it does, it may put us in a peculiar circumstance if they now know what the bid amount is for the winning bidder and now their revised bid made. So it's a peculiar circumstance. The other option is to, is to let them expire and then give them all an opportunity to refresh with no other, without a date certain, because that's, I think that's what we're asking. Like, we, are we, we're not aware when we'll have the full council seated, so... Like, we, are we, we're not aware when we'll have the full council seated, so... I'm not understanding of the request. Is it a specific date certain, or just until we have the full council seated?
Let me put it this way, and I'll ask our attorney here. By tomorrow, I guarantee that I will have an answer from our council member, which way she would vote, would that help?
No, she cannot, she can't tell you what her vote is without being a participant with, essentially, in front of the public. That'd be inappropriate.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. We heard the discussion that the bids are good from forty-five to sixty days. Or it could be thirty-nine to fifty-nine days, or it could be forty-five to sixty-one. Do we know the exact language on when this is good or not? Do we have that written someplace in state law or our contracts?
They establish their own dates.
We, I was just speaking with John Mendiola, the purchasing manager, and we would have to go back and look at our bid documents to be sure, because we don't recall what was specified in the big documents. I think forty-five to sixty days is typical, but without checking, at least I don't have the answer. I can tell you that we have exceeded sixty days before, but in my opinion, it would increase the risk that a low bidder may not hold their price.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and this is a question to my staff. If we delayed this item, could we get upstairs and see what the actual contract language or bid language says, so that we can get some certainty? Maybe, maybe the suggestion to the mayor is to move these items to the end of the meeting. That way, we can get you a good answer. It seems that we're hinging on this and can't make a decision, because we don't know exactly what we're up against.
So, I can continue with her? Okay, very good. This item will be moved to the end of...
Right, so that, so we're continuing the public hearing. You're going to move it to the end of the agenda prior to item number, I guess, the city manager report, which is... So, it would go to before twenty-two? Is that their request? And I assume it would be with B1 and B2?
Yes.
So, the hearing is still technically open, but the mayor wants to move items one and two for further consideration after you have concluded the discussion of item number twenty. Twenty-one, sorry.
And I have a question for the city manager in regards to... I don't believe that the city council should have been put in this predicament, but things happen. We have one member here. She can't be here, and if she was, she would be here, obviously. And we know the reasons why. But now, my question is to staff. If we have sixty days, forty-five to sixty days, November twenty-first was the bidding process, and the ticking time began. Why are we having it today? Why didn't we have it, let's say, last, is it that difficult to get stuff within the sixty-day period? Or is it the deadline? I don't think we should have been in today's predicament, but something is showing us that it's either the inner working of the city manager, how you're managing the team to get something within sixty days, so you don't give the council leeway to work something of this nature. Do we practice, or is this one of its first kind? Are we going to consider it in the future, so we get something, you know? Maybe last time we should have had it, now we know. Do you know what I'm saying, Mr. City Manager?
I believe I do understand what you're saying, and I think I would share with you that sadly, in this particular case, the holidays really ate us up in terms of being able to use that time to have meetings. In fact, we did cancel a meeting earlier this month. And so, these bids were around the Thanksgiving Day holiday. You know, I just have to say sadly, that the holidays actually really kind of put us into this position that we're in right now. Nothing more than that.
Thank you. You know, Mayor Protemp, who's not here today, she actually was making sure if we needed one agenda, maybe one. And maybe she kind of already knew for some reason, or we all knew something would happen, and maybe that's why we did need staff to work on that one item, that one day, that we decided not to come into the city. I think sometimes, in the future now, I'll continue to remember that when we want to set aside an item and say, we don't have anything because they're not pressing, today, we realize that the sixty-day pressure should have been done on the seventh, and we could have had that out, that one item, because of the sixty-day timeline. So, now we have to go get staff, and we're going to put this on the side, and it just becomes a little bit very unadministratively in terms of, you know, we have all this team to work with, and the city manager is very productive, and I know very keen on what he does. So, just, just for the record, maybe we would consider this. It's probably a first time, this is the first time I've seen it.
So, this item will be moved to items twenty-two and twenty-three?
Correct, and so now, it'd be appropriate to go on to the consent calendar, starting with item number three.
I do have a question, however, Madam Mayor. So, we did, if I recall correctly, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we need a substitute motion then to move it? Or we're just going to pretend?
The prerogative of the presiding officer typically is to rearrange the agenda, so I think that motion would just be pending when we get to those items after twenty, number twenty.
So, we're going to move with the item, the motion?
Right.
Gotcha.
So, I can continue on now with item number three? Andres, so I'll go, I'll start with consent calendar then?
Correct, these are all consent calendar items through item ones, I guess, item three through thirteen.
So, now we're on consent calendar, items three through thirteen, which can be approved with one motion unless there is an item or items that need to be pulled for consideration.
I do have comments and votes on specific items. I can make my comments and votes directly, or I can pull the items as well. There's item three, four, eight, eleven, three, four, eight, twelve, and thirteen. So, how would you like me to address?
It's up to the mayor. The options are to have her make her comments and her questions now on all of these items. If you pull the items, then they will be considered at the end of the written agenda. So, it's up to you, mayor, as to how you want to handle that.
Can we handle them at the end?
If you want to, yes, then it would be appropriate to pull those items right now, have a motion, have a motion to pull those items, second it, and then those items would then occur after the discussions of what are now items one and two later in the agenda.
So, the motion is to hold these items till the end?
Somebody needs to make that motion.
The motion?
Well, my motion is to talk about them right now with my comments and my voting, but if someone else wants to make an alternate motion, feel free.
Is there a second to pull those items to the end? There'd be no second, that motion dies?
Continue.
Okay, so then I'm going to go ahead. So, for item three, it's a no, obvious reasons. For four, it's also a same no, consistent with my first. Number eight, I had questions for the thirteen million dollars for the commercial demand. I don't know if we have a set trend, a set trend of attitudes and patterns that I see with our commercial demands, but I definitely wanted to bring the thirteen-point-five million. For instance, I saw four-point-six million to the San Bernardino County share, to San Bernardino County. Maybe that's not something that happens yearly, I don't know. But that's perhaps why we have thirteen-point-five million. I don't have an answer for that. I'm just speculating that that's probably procedural annually. Number twelve, we have the building division activity report. We have a lot of qualitative, not interpretive data, and I'm not an expert in the building section. I know there's issuances. There was people that actually got through the permitting process, not just the initial process, and then there was the outcome. But that qualitative data, in my eyes, I'm not an expert in reading that type of data. I've asked formally to have a small blurb of what I should be anticipating in drawing out from a data like that. It hasn't come to fruition yet. Number thirteen is the animal care and control activity. I don't know in terms of this city if we're contracting with Apple Valley or with Barstow, and if we initially have what's called, I think they call it something like zero base or no kill. I don't know how far we're up into that motion, or that way of looking of our animals in terms of euthanasia. And that's what I wanted to place on the record, because that's not what it's showing in the animal care and control activity, so I don't have any data on that. I have a lot of constituents that ask about the animals and the rate of death that we kill the animals through the contracting process with, I don't know if it's Barstow or Apple Valley. But that was all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Is it sufficient and acceptable then? If, these are good questions, for staff to report back to the questioner in regard to these animal control items? I know we have a contract, it's at Apple Valley, but the kill rate, I don't know, but staff can provide that. Do you want it on the next agenda, or do you want it just for your information?
However it comes, as long as I get to see it.
With that, then, I would...
It's okay, then, we will give her that information later.
Up to Ms. Gomez, are you okay with getting the information?
Yeah, give it to me later. That's fine, we have stats, I'll work with that.
What staff can do is summarize how our animal control services work. I think that may generally answer all the questions that were asked, because there is a distinction between the direct service we provide, which is the actual, the actual collection, if you will. We don't house, we don't shelter. We do rely upon an independent service to do that, so we do collect, and we do attend to any animal control-related issues, everything from stray dogs to, there's a snake in my backyard. So, those, I would characterize those more as the collection responsibilities that we attend to. The sheltering element, completely different, that we then transport to the local shelter. I believe it's VVA PL.
With the understanding that these, that information requested will be reported back to the individual, to copy all the counsel, please. I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with my comments.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mayor Protemp, Ramares absent, and Councilmember Gomez voting no on item three and four.
So, I can continue now to written communications. Item number fourteen, award of a standard construction agreement to diversified utility services for the gas switch replacement project, phases two and three. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the city council approve the award of a standard construction agreement by and between the city of Victorville and diversified utility services for the removal of underground SV six gas switches, project number CC twenty-dash-zero-four-two, in the amount not to exceed six-hundred-forty-four thousand and forty dollars.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, so if you look on page ten, second paragraph, I'll read what it says. It says, "On January eighteenth, then interim city manager, Mr. Messler, informed the council of issues he had discovered regarding the approval of the building contract." If you could just provide or copy every one of that memo or that reporting, I would appreciate it. That's, I don't know if I ever did receive that. I'm anticipating that I probably, hopefully, did. But if I didn't, I would like to have a copy of it, since council was informed.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I believe the item that Councilmember Gomez is speaking to is unrelated to the item that we're actually on. I believe page ten, and I'm scrolling through, probably deals with the skateboard park. But notwithstanding that, understanding what she's asking for, that is a very well-documented issue, and we can certainly pull the previous memorandums that were prepared advising of the circumstances surrounding the pause that we took back in two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? One else? No?
Yes, just really quickly. I understand that we're doing the gas switches, employee safety concerns with VMS. I've never heard of that, but I applaud you for saying employee safety reasons, and I'm sure that's procedural. I'm just wanting to understand if that's the case.
Procedural in the sense that these are, these are switches that aren't probably the safest for our employees to work around. Certainly, there's a lot of operating measures that have to be put in place to make sure that when we actually go down into a vault where these gas switches are located, and so you know, these gas switches are directly related to the electrical system, not the natural gas system. They effectively serve to interrupt power so as to protect the system. We periodically go through and inspect those, but the enclosed environment that staff have to work with and the toxic, if not deadly, nature of this gas, if they were to seep out of the switches, just creates a potentially unsafe environment. So, staff, a couple of years ago, as a part of the capital improvement program for the electric utility, had included as a part of a longer-term capital improvement program to eventually replace all nine of the underground gas switches, replacing them with pad-mounted switchgear, so they're above ground and not dealing with this, this type of gas. We had actually brought for this council's consideration previously Phase One, which had been approved in a previous budget and previously been completed. We'd actually completed the replacement of two of the nine. Staff's advising that in this item, we are better off financially if we accelerate the phases two and phase three, to do them all now. Staff believes that there'd be an overall savings of a hundred thousand dollars. There's adequate funding in the electric utility fund to satisfy this capital improvement now, as opposed to stretching it out over time. Therefore, accelerating the replacement of these switches and likely making the O and M side of this item much easier to deal with and safer.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, at this moment, I'd like to bring forth the recommendation with a motion.
I still need the speaker cards, which I do not have. So, now I need the motion.
So, at this time, I'd like to bring forth that recommended motion, that recommended agreement that we have the standard construction and the change between the utility services as recommended by staff here. Fourth with a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now I move to item number fifteen. Professional services provider agreement between the city of Victorville and Electrical Power Systems, Inc., for engineering services and construction management services to design a new substation for Victorville Municipal Utility Services. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the award of a professional services provider agreement by and between the city of Victorville and Electrical Power Systems for engineering design services and construction management services of the Victorville Municipal Utility Services Substation, project number CC twenty-dash-zero-seventy-seven, in the amount not to exceed two-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. Yeah, so I have, for obvious reasons of my own, issues with this particular one. I have, I'm looking at the number three amendment, and if you think back at what we had Mr. Gangler go up and look for sixty-days RFQs and all this, you know, and how it works with the city, whether we have a good name, have business or not. So, when did we do the RFQ for this? It's been seven months. I think it was June fourth, twenty nineteen. Seven months, and now we have a third amendment. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I think I may be reading it to some regard a bit skewed, but nonetheless, I perceive this, if we give out a bid, and we anticipate that the evaluation is between the certain confines of dollars, and other bidders were ousted because they didn't fit that bidding need, he or this company did, we're going through a third amendment, which tells me that perhaps the initial bid didn't work in. But like I said, I could be reading a bit skewed. There's something that I can probably think that this is within the... probably think that this is within the contract of the contract, and it's typically natured, but I need an information bit from an expert here.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, I believe the comments that Councilmember Gomez is speaking to actually are more directly related to item number 16, which is the next item. The item that we're dealing with currently is awarding a contract for design-related services for the VMS electrical system. Certainly, we can answer her questions now, though they don't directly relate to this item.
I would rather wait until we get to item 16. This is for the design of the new substation for the Victorville Municipal Utility Services.
So just if you clarify the expansion that VMS has gone through, there's a little blurb that says to meet anticipated customer expansion requirements. I'm presuming we have more customers. I don't know, it doesn't say that here when I read it.
This item, Madam Mayor and members of the council, is really a forward planning item. Certainly, we at the airport and as VMS have seen a great amount of success in terms of attracting industrial customers to the airport. And if you're not familiar, the airport and the electric system is fed by a 33 KV circuit that connects to the Victor Substation, which is located on Palmdale Road. Because of the growth that we've experienced, the increased customer base and the loading on our existing system, we realize that if we continue at the pace that we are in terms of industrial growth at the airport, which is, which is a good thing, we need to start planning for the increased capacity in being able to deliver power to the airport. Currently, the 33 KV system has a limit on what it can deliver, and certainly, there's some power quality issues that go along with that type of circuit, which is a radial feed to the airport. Just as we do in any other utility for the city, we develop master plans so that we know what our future needs are going to be, and then, of course, we rate case around those. This item is directly related to what we believe is necessary to be able to adequately provide power to the customers of the future. And if we don't start planning for that, it's very likely that we could find ourselves in a position where we can't accept any new customers. So this is planning for the future. This is the very first step in the process that would study and design a new circuit, presumably tying back into the same substation, which is the Victor Substation, but instead upgrading the circuitry so that you've got a 230 KV system connecting to the airport based upon our growth projections at the airport, our load projections at the airport. We believe that the 230 KV system is what can satisfy our growth needs in the future and also improve both the power quality and the reliability that we're looking for. So with that, that's the general summary of this item. This is specifically for design-related services for that future circuit.
Questions?
Move staff's recommendation?
Second.
I do not have any speaker cards.
Oh, sorry, didn't mean to get involved.
That's fine, that's fine. I don't have any.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 16, amendment number three to the agreement with General Pump Company for water well maintenance and repair for fiscal year 2019-2020, and additional appropriation to High Desert Power Plant Contract Services account, and approval of additional revenue to operating cost recovery expense account. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve amendment number three to the agreement with General Pump Company to provide water well maintenance and repair for a total not to exceed $500,000, approve an additional appropriation of $400,000 to High Desert Power Plant Contract Services, and approve additional revenue of $448,000 to operating cost recovery.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, by councilmembers?
So I already asked the question, so I'll anticipate Keith is going to respond.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
So I asked a question earlier, Keith would be willing to answer.
You're right, she did. Okay, go ahead.
So this item, really at the time when we prepared the budget, these items weren't foreseen as being requested and/or needed by the High Desert Power Project. And as a part of the budget, we basically relied on, relied on a trend of past expenses to operate and maintain the well field that was basically built to not only provide groundwater to the High Desert Power Project, but also to serve as reinjection for banking purposes of groundwater. Because of those trends, we didn't write the contract with General Pump so as to include these, these items that have been recently requested by High Desert Power. Notwithstanding that, the relationship we have with High Desert Power is an absolute pass-through, so whether we project the expenses correctly or not, the High Desert Power Plant is obligated to reimburse wholly any O&M and capital-related expense to these, to these reinjection wells. So on top of that, they have to provide us a 12% administrative fee above and beyond the actual cost. So what you have here is an item that amends the existing well maintenance contract with General Pump and creates an additional appropriation, both on the revenue and expense side. You'll actually find that the net of the two creates a net revenue to the water district so as to offset some of the administrative costs.
And the other question that I have is, I'm looking at a figure here. I think you kind of expressed a 12% administrative fee in terms of it being something good for the city. I don't know if that's what it is. We're talking about reimbursement? Okay, so... And then the other thing is, you said you sent out a memo, a two-month planned outage. Did, staff was informed of a two-month planned outage for the plant in the spring of 2020. So did the City Council receive a memo of this two-month planned outage?
No, this is, no, you wouldn't have received anything from me about this planned outage, because this planned outage that's spoken to in the staff report is not directly related to our city operation. This is a planned outage of the private High Desert Power Plant Project, and because they have some fairly meaningful maintenance work to do on their plant, they actually advised us that because their plant operation is going to be down, this would be an opportune time for us to do whatever maintenance we need to do, particularly rehabbing a well, so that in the event something happened to that well while they were actually operating, we would not be forced to delay how they operate or force them to shut down. So this is kind of forward planning on their part so as to be able to continue operating reliably by sharing with us, you know, their planned outage, so that any additional maintenance items that need to be done to the well system could be done now as opposed to later when they're in full operation.
So then, when I hear about the word outage, I think about a constituency being uninformed in terms of how the High Desert Power plans for it, but it seems like we're not servicing anyone, whether it's industrial, residential, or commercial. So what I'm hearing from you is there's no need to tell council, because we don't need to tell our constituency, because our constituency isn't going to be affected by the outage. Is that correct? Because that's what I'm hearing.
No, that is not correct. There is not, and maybe it helps, despite the High Desert Power Plant being located at SCLA and maybe right next door to our electrical system, there is no direct relationship between the operations of the High Desert Power Plant and our electrical system. In fact, the High Desert Power Plant produces electricity that goes directly back into the Cal ISO grid. Totally independent, has nothing to do with our delivery of power to our customers. We actually source our power from a different interconnect, which I just explained, which is the Victor Substation. So their planned outage has nothing to do with our constituency. It's more something they coordinate directly with Cal ISO so as, so that the grid knows not to expect their electrons during the period of time at which they're down.
Thank you. Just a quick point, Madam Mayor, so may I? All right, so just to be very clear, point three in the recommendation, the revenue coming in is $448,000. That $48,000 over the expenditure represents that 12% fee that we were talking, you were talking about?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, I don't, thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Yes, so I move that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yeah, so I appreciate the sincerity that Mr. Messler brought in into the historic trends that led to the third amendment, and I appreciate the vendor having, and what I'm going to call leniency to the city through its immaculate relationship. However, things like this, when we don't calculate, and it's presumably, I'm thinking about the skatepark went through the same issue and the same problem, that's why we're re-looking at it again. In terms of this, when we have a bidder coming in and the bidder doesn't have the opportunity to bid for a project, I think what the city is doing is cutting off relationships from potential bidders who probably are looking at today's third amendment, where they could have probably had, you know, the money expended to them. So things of this nature, I don't know if it's very typical that it happens when our executive team looks at it. It looks at the historic trends, it has made an error. That error is going to cost us money, we're on to a third amendment. Things like that, I would be very cautious, because I don't think, we have enough staff on board to be able to catch something of this nature. So even though I'm going to be voting for that, for this item, I'd like to, like I said, we need to be more cautious in things like that. There is no need to have, base something on historic trends. We, I don't know if we have this strategic plan where we build on futuristic forecasts, so we don't fall on past trends. And I'm telling you this, and this is not just to talk, this is not to talk about me, but in my doctoral program, these are some of the issues that we are discussing currently, that our city administration falls short on. And so that's why I needed to bring it, yes, I needed to bring it forth. You're welcome, Mrs. Smith.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 17, water connection fee credit agreement by, by and between Pacific Summit Summerfield LLC and the Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors adopt resolution number VWD 20-002 approving the water connection fee credit agreement by and between Pacific Summit Summerfield and the Victorville Water District, and authorize the Water District General Manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions of staff, by councilmembers?
Yes, so I read a couple of times through this. The pretty, the big picture is water district and school district collaboration is all I took from it, all to say that it's quite densely written. Can you, in a paragraph or even briefer, please explain this, to see if I'm on the right track?
Keith, if you'd like me, I'll try and take a crack at it. Essentially, it's a very complicated transaction whereby there was a CFD form several years ago between the Snowline School District and the former Baldy Mesa Water District. They issued bonds. Those bonds were to pay for the costs of public improvements. Those improvements were put in. The city, or the Water District received a call saying that there were funds still remaining from that CFD Community Facilities District bond issue, and that the Water District determined that it had eligible improvements that had been paid for that should be reimbursed with those available funds. Now that there is a developer in that facility, in that same tract where the CFD was formed, and now that we have the improvements in place, those developers are entitled to basically receive fee credits for the improvements having been put in place. And so this is basically an agreement to reimburse, once the developer starts building homes, he will be eligible to receive fee credits for the homes to essentially offset the cost of those public improvements which were previously put in. I think that's about as simple a thumbnail as I can do.
So just the last part, to receive a fee credit to offset, what is?
That the developer, as he builds homes, will receive a fee credit for the costs of the improvements.
And how is the city involved? Is it because it's contractual to us or the mediators?
It's the Water District, actually, that was the beneficiary of the improvements. It's not the city, it's the Water District.
So the Water District is going to benefit from this, or the developer?
Correct. Water District has basically received public improvements that have been put in, and those funds were available, and the Baldy, sorry, the now Victor Valley Water District has received those funds.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, so at the end of all of this, this is actually a measure that protects the interests of the property owner, and the property owner is amenable to it. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
I'll move the recommendation I sent forth by staff.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 18, acceptance of offers of dedication for Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council accept the offers of dedication for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project, and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents to accept said offers of dedication.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
So just clarification, so this is still to start mid-June, and it's a two-year roughly process? Has that changed?
It has changed, in large part because when we forecasted that June date, we were expecting to have completed all of the right-of-way by June, July 1st of last year. We're, because the property acquisitions have been delayed, and we're just now nearing the completion of all acquisitions, this being one of the last ones, the start of construction date has been pushed out likely to early Janu, early 2021, I believe is where we're at now. That would give us basically all of this year to certify the right-of-way, actually retain a construction management firm, complete all the bids, and then actually go to award. So the start has been pushed out in a commensurate time, about six, seven months. So we're looking at early 2021 to start.
And we're still anticipating about roughly two-year completion?
Yes.
Thank you, no further questions.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number 19, standard lease agreement for Building 685A and standard sublease agreement for Building 720-100 between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Reach Air Medical Services LLC. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into a standard lease agreement for Building 685A and a standard sublease agreement for Building 720-100 by and between the SCLA-A and Reach Air Medical Services, adopt resolution number SCLA-A 19-010, increasing budgeted revenues by $2,837.45, and authorize the Assistant Executive Director to execute... cents, and authorize the Assistant Executive Director to execute said agreements.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yes, so I'm not thinking that, I mean, when someone comes in lease, they have a contractual ending. The last time I remember that Reach came over, we were okay, but in reading this standard lease agreement, it made it seem like there's either some kind of change, whether they're either either getting more for their buck, but what troubled me, because I'm not understanding, was are we gaining something? That language made it seem like we're gaining rather than producing a service, and I know in government, we don't use the benefit of extracting money as marginal profits, and that's what I perceived it to be. It's just probably the language interpretation in that matter.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I think the the gain, if if we wanted to characterize it that way, is just comparing the the previous lease with this current lease, and it's trying to suggest to you that the lease revenue being generated in in this renegotiated lease is actually greater than the previous lease relationship we had with with Reach.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
One else? No? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the.
Go ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, so I move that the, thank you, Councilmember Gomez, I move that the SCLA Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendation set out on the agenda, specifically items one, points one, two, and three.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number twenty, twenty twenty City County Conference. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council authorize official business travel to the twenty twenty City County Conference for all interested council members, to include expenditures expenditures for registration, hotel, and parking.
Are there any questions of staff by council members?
So I'm going to presume, because it's submitted by Charlene Robinson, our city clerk, it means that she took on her own behest to add this as part of an agenda item, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, based on our policy and our historic trends, as we are treating the the way council is going to discretionary, either approve or not approve, we have had to have brought this upon ourselves. If I wanted to go to a meeting, and we would all self-select. However, I'm looking at a different trend. Is that trend something that we're going to pick depending on what conferences we're going to get? I mean, I just need a general understanding, because I see a different trend happening today.
This is a standard conference, and this one sells out quickly, so that's what I would put this one on.
Do you call it a standard what?
Conference. Every year, and all, and council usually attends this meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Comment, I guess I'll wait.
I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
You know, before we move that, I just realized that the cost is currently not available. Is that because we don't have funding? Because I know each council member has a thousand two hundred dollars. Is this offset from a different fund, or what is going on here?
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, if I might, and I want to call attention to the fiscal impact, and and the the cost for the upcoming conference are not yet known, and I'm not exactly sure, they've published the rates, either for the event, or for the hotel, or or both. But the one item that I I specifically want to call attention to, that there is a, there is a typographical error in the fiscal impact, the nineteen fifty-nine per registrant is inaccurate, we actually recalculated today to find that the the cost per registrant is closer to three hundred and seventeen dollars, and that's based upon the actual cost from last year. It it's it's safe to to believe that the cost for the upcoming City County Conference is going to be close to that amount. So really, the reason why this item on is now, as opposed to later, is in fact exactly as the city clerk had suggested, when they open registration for this event, the hotel fills up fast, it's a high-demand event, and what we don't want to do is find ourselves in a position where because the council hasn't considered, because the city council policy requires that all travel be considered by the council before approved, it's not so much a budgetary issue, there is adequate budget in in your council travel budget to to satisfy this. It's more so directly related to us wanting to be able to react as quickly as we can so that accommodations can be made available to the council if the council so chooses to go.
I'm going to second the motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. I'm glad that was corrected, because when I read this, that the two thousand nineteen City County Conference amounted to nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine per registrant, I knew that had to be an error. It was a good conference, I enjoyed it. The amount of money for Mr. Cox was zero, just want to throw that out. But the conference was good, didn't charge the city, I don't.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Item number twenty-one, twenty twenty State of the County Regional Business Summit. Recommendation, any action is at the discretion of the City Council. So we need to approve those that want to attend, is that correct? Councilmembers to attend. Any questions? A motion? In a second.
I move that we authorize fifty-dollar registration fee for the council members who need to attend the State of the Counties Regional Business Sum, Summit on February five.
Second. Gomez, was that you with the second?
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear your, what did you say, that we raise?
No, 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 the the cost is fifty dollars per person, so I meant that we authorize the city to authorize the fifty dollar per person for registration fee for the council members to attend the State of the County Regional Business Summit.
Is there a second?
I did, I did, I'm sorry, I was coughing at the same time I was trying to second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move to item number twenty-two.
Now, it'd be appropriate now to go back to items one and two, and I believe, I don't know if staff has an update on the bidding issues.
One and two.
Yes, and one is still an open continued hearing, we haven't opened two yet.
With motion.
So, Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for bearing with us to actually get a hold of the actual bid documents. These two projects are actually pretty unique in that they complement one another. So item number one, and I know we're talking about item one, number one, but I do need to talk about item number two as well. One is for the Skateboard Park itself, item number two is for the amenities that are associated with the same project. Although it's, it's typical that we would provide forty-five to sixty days in order to, after the bids are received, in order to present these items to the City Council, as stated in the documents, because the second item, the date to receive those bids was a month after, and we knew that the two projects worked in concert with one another, the first item was given an additional thirty days in order to, to, of time to go to council. So there was a total of ninety days provided for item number one, a total of ninety days provided for item number two, with November twenty-first being the receipt of the bid date for item number one, that that gives you well beyond the second meeting in February, if you would like to consider it at that time, and one more month, if you'd like to consider the other item. But I would recommend that the two items, once, once considered, be considered together at the same, the same evening. And so if the wish of the council is to continue to either the first meeting or the second meeting in February, we would have ample time within the contract to do so.
That's wonderful, thank you. Thank you for that information. So we do have until February.
Eighteenth would be the second meeting.
For both items.
So if you wanted to go back, Councilmember Gomez, I believe it was your motion, and make the motion to continue the item to the February eighteenth meeting, apparently that can work for staff.
The farthest we push it, right? Yeah, that's, that's fine.
And that indicated, I would second that motion if it's worked, and it did, so.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, to continue the item to the February eighteenth meeting. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clarification, this is a public hearing, it's continued also.
Yes.
Right.
Sorry for the interruption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
Now we move on to our public comments.
We need to do number two now, and you need to please open the public hearing on item number two.
Oh, I.
Yes, because.
I thought we took them both together.
We got comments related to both, but we haven't opened the public hearing on item number two yet.
I, I, my apologies, I thought we were doing both.
Yeah, we, I thought we were doing both together.
But we didn't have the public hearing on item two.
We haven't had the public hearing on item number two yet.
Madam Mayor and Council, I would just comment the same for item number two, same same conversation.
So just procedurally, Mayor Garcia, it'd be appropriate just to open item number two, take any public comments, and then continue that item with a motion.
Okay, at this time, I open item number two, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of notice of exemption and additional appropriation in a word of construction, contract to California Landscape and Design Inc. for the Doris Davies Park Amenities Project. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore.
It'd be appropriate to continue that item, and then just for clarification.
This item will be continued.
To the February eighteenth meeting?
To February eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I believe it is.
This item will be, also be continued to February the eighteenth.
And Mayor Cox, I believe your motion was to continue both items, one and two? Okay, so I don't think we need another motion on that, I think it's clear.
So now it's clear that we have both continued.
Thank you.
I can continue with public comments then?
Correct.
Now we will continue with public comments. I do have one card, Ivan Mesh, Meshek. Or I have more. Okay, first one is Ivan, and after Ivan will be Robert. 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 A three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I'm here again to speak regarding the city library. It's in a terrible area, it needs to be moved, it's a very dangerous area, the lighting is terrible, terrible, and of course, the street. And while I'm on the subject of streets, I saw in your display earlier that you were talking about over nine thousand potholes, well, at the corner of Joshua and Heraldo, there is a huge pothole that was done by Public Works. It is not safe, it's not level. There's, on the street, Seneca, it needs to be totally resurfaced. So I'm telling you, this nine thousand, I I think there's over a million, and I think that our Public Works people should be out there every day, and if need be, I think you need to bring in a private contractor, because their work is not really up to par. But I think you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, and after Robert will be Deanne Hudgens.
Councilmembers, hi, this is my first time speaking, so if I'm a little nervous, please just.
Could you speak right into the mic, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is my first time coming to this type of meeting, so I'm a little nervous, so if I seem to jump around, please bear with me. I'm a small business owner in the city of Hisperia, and I've been in the high desert for approximately a year and a half. I have been, for the last couple of years, attempting to secure a business license in the city of Victorville for retail sales of industrial hemp products, and to date, I've not heard if there's an ordinance in Victorville denying industrial hemp products, and I'm just not sure at this point where I need to go or the direction. And I, I don't know, at this point, I'm at a crossroad, I'm not sure, and that's why I'm here. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask questions, or if this is just something that I'm able to make a comment, and then that's it, I'm not sure.
Madam Mayor, if I might, Scott Webb is is our city planner, if he can meet you in the back, he'll give you his business card, if he has one, if he doesn't, he'll give you his contact information, and he can talk through our zoning and regulatory process.
Great, I appreciate, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Deanne Hudgens, and after Deanne will be Chef Basil.
Good evening. Mayor Garcia, I watched your comments on the video from last meeting, and the accusations you made to Mr. Jones regarding his attacking you was conduct unbecoming an elected official. He is entitled to his First Amendment rights regardless of his his relationship with a council member. He is a citizen of Victorville and totally entitled to express his opinion. What you called an attack was nothing more than his opinion of your representation of the city, which in no way was an attack. The other statement reported stating he would see you, he would, stated he would see that you were not reelected, is once again his right to express as a citizen and a voter in Victorville. You taking those perfectly legitimate statements to the level of attacking a widow indicates you may not be able to separate your private life from that of an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Morning, Council. When I last spoke to you, Mayor, you mentioned to me, I asked you for a certificate that I could give the, but I failed to, Charlene had just left, so she had asked me to get the, if I could get a thank you certificate for the culinary team that helped us cook five thousand pounds of food that we fed Trona, Trona. But what we're going to do now is that my wife and I are going to come by, come back next month, and thank everybody that helped us feed the entire town, it's never been done in the history of California, and we had a lot of great people that helped us feed, and they still need help. We're going to, you know, we're going to mention about that, that cream corn that everybody talked about, that a lot of us took home with us. We're going to talk about how we ran short and how the mayor came through for us, but we're going to do that next month, but I just wanted to come out and make sure that I let Charlene know that I forgot to let her know about the certificate, so we'll talk about that afterwards. And I'll pick a day next month when we can talk about thanking everybody here that came out and helped in the community, and Maggie Martin too, she was the champion, and the former councilman McCracken, McCran, how he helped too, everybody had helped. And then finally, is there anything going to be done for Black History Month by any chance?
I'm sorry, we're not hearing you too well. What was your question?
Is anything going to be done for Black History Month, which is in February?
Well, we had the participation yesterday that we did.
Oh, okay. No, for Black History Month in February, yesterday was Martin Luther King Day.
But I don't know if we're doing anything else besides.
Yeah, and I'm not drawing right off the top of my head, but our Community Services Director is here in the audience, Janelle Davidson, she can. director is here in the audience, Janelle Davidson, she can meet you in the back and talk through.
Okay, no problem. And the final thing I want to talk about, I'd like to meet your homeless director, 'cause when I was down to the, first of all, they're doing a great job with the eighty beds down there, we're gonna take some items tonight, if it's, if they're down there. But when I was down there, I talked to one of the directors down there, and they had mentioned to me that the, the African-American sister that's in charge, I hope she's here, I don't know if she's here or not, they said, no one's been down there, and I kinda thought that was kinda, I don't know if that was true or not, because if, if you're the director of, of the homeless situation for the city that works here, I'm sure she's been down there, and maybe I didn't hear her right, but I'd like to meet her to see if anybody on the task force has actually been down to the homeless shelter. It just kinda disturbed me a little bit that she was telling me, I just wanna verify that or not. Maybe you can find out for me if your director or anybody on that team has been down to the homeless shelter, but it's going great. Okay, but other than that, thank you very much, and I'll, Charlene, I'll talk to you later.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was the last card that I had.
Madam Mayor, Council members, Happy New Year to everybody. I might not agree a hundred percent all the time I die with you, Gloria Garcia, but you were elected, and due process was followed, and you were elected mayor, and congratulations, and, and we gotta respect the process, no matter what reservations were canceled that day, but we have to understand that the process was happened, happened, and whether you like it or not, it is what it is. And so, on, on that part, you know, congratulations, and, and hope maybe we might continue talking a little bit more and arrive to common ground, and what we've been seeking, I've been seeking from the council. Also, the gentleman's question about hemp products, usually when people come up here and ask a question, we'd like to hear the answer from the city instead of sending him to the back and have privately a conversation with, with the people that give out the permits. I was waiting for an answer if hemp products are allowed here in Victorville or not, so that's, that was the answer, but I would like to have that as common knowledge, if it's allowed or not. And the third thing I want to bring up is Ms. Gomez was accused of spending over ninety thousand dollars in city expenses, and I've sent a lot of emails, and I haven't received nothing, I'd like to know the scale that would use to arrive at that number, so maybe I can settle the debt, like the city settled with the SEC. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Madam Mayor, that demands a response. We clearly tell people they can come to the microphone, and we will take their name and number and let, get back to them later, but if it's not on the agenda, we don't have a discussion, this isn't something new, we do this all the time. Beal didn't have a building permit, we want to respond, he meets with the staff, we answer the question, if it rises to the level of being on the agenda, we agendize it, so this is not new.
It, it's also prohibited from the, by the Brown Act to get into a discussion or respond to questions.
Always have something if we meet.
I do not have any other cards. So now we move on to reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, just one item to announce tonight, and that's an introduction to our newest member of the leadership team, Brenda Hampton, I'd like her to stand up and, and just wave and, and say hello. But Brenda is our new Director of Utility Services, and she's actually taking over for Michael Tenick, who, as, as you know, has been with us a couple of years now, and has actually worked with us as a part-time director, because he had retired previously from the municipal utility industry, had come back, worked with us to help us navigate the, the last couple of years. But after an exhaustive recruitment effort, over six months of, of effort, we were successful in finding somebody like Brenda, who's been in the industry for a very long time, nearly twenty-five years. Her background is diverse in the power industry, having managed and supervised plants, she's worked on the regulatory side of the power industry, and also ran a municipal utility in another municipality. So with that, we're, I actually feel very proud to have been able to convince Ms. Hampton to come to California from Austin, Texas, but she did so readily, and spent the holiday preparing for that transition, she's been with us since January sixth, hitting the ground running, trying to get up to speed, but she is gonna be relied upon to be your, your newest member of the leadership team, that's gonna help navigate our utility to be even more successful than, than it already has been. Welcome, Brenda.
Welcome to Victorville.
Welcome. Did you have anything else? Now we move on to item twenty-four, discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items, and this is a three-minute time limit. Have anything?
I don't, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a couple of items that I'd like to see placed on the agenda, so the first one, so we're talking about the general fund reserves, I know it's currently, and it's probably for many, many years been at fifteen percent, I'd like to see it raised. If the city manager doesn't bring that on his own recognizance, I would like for the consideration of this council to even have a discussion to bring that into fruition. I don't know if that's in his work, or in his workings, or in his vision, but I haven't seen it thus far, I've requested over two years to see that lift, other cities have at fifty percent, it's amazing, when you go to these council meetings and conferences, you see that, and it's, it's immaculate, and I don't know why we're at fifteen percent, so I'd like to see that on the agenda. I, I would need a motion, of course, before I go to the next one.
Is there a second?
The, the next one that I'd like to see, it's pretty much dead.
There be no second, the motion dies?
The second thing is, we're looking at the general fund, and we're trying to address these things called expenditures and revenues, I think instead of looking at it holistically by the financial management, and how we're, we should be doing an analysis on the entire thing, every year that we do do it, it bypasses, and we don't get anything done in terms of the each line item, it just gets incremented, that's all it does. So when we focus on something like the general fund, which is what I'm hoping that the manager is going to address with the police and fire, I don't see it as far that we have been doing it, so I'd like to see a workshop just directed towards general funding and looking at its expenditures, and having a workshop for your involvement.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
The next one is all upcoming events from the League of California City, I'd like to have those already agendized, so that we can add them to the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 budget, our fiscal budget, instead of having the city clerk added one by one by one, 'cause this is what we typically do, so that's another item.
A second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
I have a comment from the librarian, I don't know if we have the library maintenance and operations services, any issues, opportunities, or threats, I'm hoping the twenty-fifth is what we'll talk about and focus it, but if we're not, maybe we can hold a workshop, I know this is Rita's forte, and on her behalf, I'd like to see a workshop in the near future. I know she's a very, very progressive when it comes to that, and our librarian, or someone that works for the library, was here, so I'd like to advocate for her as well, she's advocating for our community.
I may second, I have a question, do you want it separate, or as a part of the budget process?
You know, if we do something, a part of the, part of the budget, it's eighty-eight accounts, we never focus on the things that come in, so.
A second, because the library is very important.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question for clarification, and I know it has to be limited, so that we don't turn this into an agenda item, but aren't we already working in that regard?
Yes, staff has been directed, and we're in the process of actually completing a study, we had retained a consultant to actually study the existing library, and any needs related to it and/or a potential expansion, so that, that's something that's underway, and, and when the study is complete, that's something certainly we would bring back to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make that a workshop, since it's already coming in. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, for a library workshop. Any further comments?
With the caveat that it comes with the study, is that the understanding here?
Yes, absolutely.
Sure.
The understanding.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
For my last few seconds, someone talked about potholes, like the streetlights, we did something so narrowly tailored, I'd like to see that with our streets, I don't know which have been improved, which have not been improved, which are part of the CIP, I think we could do that manageably. That would be my motion. Yes, so we had someone that said that there's a lot of potholes, and the Public Works did the pothole, well, what I wanna see is the citywide, do we have, how can we improve, kinda like the streetlight, we did something with the streetlights, so that same notion is what I'm looking at.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
Yeah, that's it.
I have nothing, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do. And this may take care of itself, because we are involved in the homeless program, trying to seek solutions. We know this is a changing discussion, we now have a threat from the governor that we will build homeless shelters, or they are going to sue us. I suppose we need to wait on the lawsuit, I don't know how to go to each one of you and take money from you to build a shelter, because we don't have money for that, it's a new program, it's doubtful it's legal, but that's an order from the governor, and this city is working with the county on homeless shelter issues. And the reason I bring this up is I know we have a report coming, we have a director, someone tonight mentioned that they have never been to the shelter, I don't know which shelter they're talking about, but I had a meeting Friday and Sunday, both, and then a little bit Monday, from a group that's saying, this has to end, or we're just simply leaving. Almost people, they come up every morning, they're laying in the front door, they've gone through, they've dumped their trash all over the parking lot, and when they confronted those individuals, those individuals had a tendency to be very vocal, and appeared to be violent, they don't wanna take the law into their own hands, they realize how busy the Sheriff's Department is, they can't be coming out, because even when they do come out, the people are gone. And I know a lot of people wanna help the homeless, but we have a drug and alcohol problem along with those people who don't want, who want to be homeless, and folks, the public has had enough, we're going to have to do something, we're going to have to agendize it, we're going to have to give some answers, because I know the federal government is budgeting money, the state's budgeting money, it initially has never been a responsibility of local government, and with the governor's threat to sue the cities that don't build shelters, it is going to become our responsibility, that is a brand-new source of revenue that we don't have, and have no means to get, that deserves a discussion, take any more criticism that we're not doing anything for the homeless, we need to open this up, so people will have an understanding that these mandates are coming down from the state, or face a lawsuit, I think we have to discuss it, so I'd like to see that on a future agenda, I'm not gonna say when, because I don't know where we're going with the coalition, I know staff is working very hard, so I'd just like to raise that issue, you're gonna hear more of it, and be prepared to agendize it quickly, because I'm now getting the phone calls at home, and people wanting me to come out to see what's happening to their business, and they are now, beyond saying we need to do something, they are mad, and I don't blame them, after what I have seen. If it needs to be a motion, I make the motion.
I second it.
We gotta, we gotta move on this.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, any further comments?
So with clarification, your motion comes with the task force and its analysis, so we have something to.
Yes.
Go with, I appreciate it, yeah.
Okay, and so if I could just ask another question for clarification, again, trying to be careful, so this is gonna be a more in-depth conversation about the strategic, the task force strategic action plan as it relates to what's coming down the pike.
Well, I think it's a combination of that, but it's informing the public that we're at least doing something, there is the belief in the general public, we're not doing a damn thing.
Gotcha.
And we are, and they need to be told what we're doing and what the constraints are. We can only do that by having this brought back as an agenda item.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez being absent.
I covered everyone, so. Ms. Jones, did you have anything?
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam Mayor, well, it's been a long time since we've had a council meeting, so Happy New Year to my colleagues, and to my community.
Now we're still on agendizing for the.
Oh, no, no, I already, I'm sorry, I thought you, you moved on, because I had already said I didn't have any on that one.
Now I'm moving on to reports from council members.
So now, I can, but I can wait, it's your preference, Madam Mayor. Okay, so, so again, Happy New Year to my colleagues and my community, it's been a long time since we've met, so I've been doing my due diligence and attending all of the normal meetings that, and taking care of businesses I normally would. Yesterday was Delta Sigma Theta's fourteenth annual Dr. MLK Junior Peace March, was honored to be a part of that, I think all of our council was there that could be there, and the theme of that march was peace, standing for people engaged actively in community endeavors, and I think that was very fitting, given what we're, we've been talking about tonight, certainly with the city manager's presentation, and all that we've accomplished over the course of 2019, and last year in particular, I noticed that we had more people from the community come out and talk about some things that we needed to really take care of in our city, so happy to say that our, our city is becoming more and more responsive to the questions and concerns of our community members, and that's it, thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, I do not, thank you.
Yes, so Feliz Ano Nuevo a todas las personas que no les he deseado el feliz año como concejal. Quiero también decirles que febrero veinticinco es un día muy importante de diez a tres. Nosotros tendemos un taller, este taller es para discutir la misión, los retos y la vis, la visión de nuestra ciudad. Si tú no participas, posiblemente no pongamos lo que tú has, piensas que son los, los problemas que hay en la calle. Otra cosa también que quiero recordarle a la comunidad, igual como la señora que vino a hablar aquí, que se llama Deanne Hutchinson, Deanne Hutchen, ella dio unos comentarios y quiero recordarle a ella, como a toda la comunidad, que nosotros aquí trabajamos como un equipo, así que cuando el liderazgo se le apunta a una persona, quiero que recuerden que somos cinco, son los retos, los impactos, son para todos, los, los ataques, las glorias, son para todos en común. So I'd like to say thank you very much, Happy New Year for everyone from Councilmember Gomez, February twenty-fifth is gonna be our next workshop for that mission, vision, and goal setting, at ten o'clock, if you're not there, perhaps we're not gonna consider a lot of what you may have with our, which are complaints externally that you face day to day, or based on your experiences, so it's very, very important to attend that meeting. The other thing that I like to say to the community, as well as to the speaker that came up here, Deanne Hutchens, I want you to know that whenever you give a comment, whether it's a praise, or lack of praise, or whatever it have you, you need to understand, just so the. just so the community is, you're giving that compliment, or that retaliation, or your opinion to all five of us, we work here as a team, so whatever blow you try to give one person, I feel it because it's to me too, the leadership doesn't function with one council member, it takes all five of us, so I wanted to remind the community, and such as yourself as well, thank you very much.
I don't think we have anything else.